I'm going to call the meeting to order. If we could, let's take a moment to catch our breath and reflect upon what we've done in the past and what we're getting ready to do here in the coming minutes. Thank you. Now if you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. This has been a tight week for a lot of us. I guess with the holidays coming up and everything, we're kind of squeezing in a bunch of meetings. I know we've had several committee meetings already this week and more coming up. And so, we've got our hands full. I understand that we have the potential here of losing a quorum in the next hour or so. So I'm going to start with the VIA agenda today, so we can get the most of our business conducted. And first of all, I'll ask Mr. Arnt if he has any announcements or he wants to pursue his, continue with his president and CEO report.
I have a number of recognitions that I'd like to make fairly quickly here. So the first thing I would like to do is, as you know, on the agenda this month, we're moving forward with our council, our advisory council. And we had a previous VIA long-range citizens advisory council that was established in July of 2009 to support the development and review of our long-range plan. This group met during the long-range planning process and continued to meet and participate in the early implementation of that plan through 2013. So we have, I believe, at least five members, as Ossilvia Mendiola, who kind of led the charge there, would like to just take a minute and will recognize the folks that are retiring from that council. Yes, absolutely.
Can I call your name? Please come up, please. John Streep. Thank you, sir, for your service. John, would you like to come back up for your photo? Rob Killen.
I just want to point out that it's always great to have folks participate in our outreach programs and give us the feedback and the input that we need. We're going to be doing more of that later on in the meeting today as we appoint our transit advisory council. I'll turn it back over to Jeff.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your help to the Long Range Citizens Advisory Council. I'd like to, secondly, recognize a couple of staff members. You know, we had our third annual idea conference on October 29th. It is a business supplier diversity program. There were a number of partners with us, the City of San Antonio, the Edwards Aquifer Authority, Bear County, SAWs, UHS, SAHA. We received 143 RSPPs with about 123 of those attending, along with 60 agency representatives. So it was a very, very full day. The chairman joined us. Mr. Bryant joined us that day. I would like to recognize Eddie Cruz and Ashley Ramirez quickly. If you'd stand up. Thank you for helping put together a very successful event. Very good job. Thank you so much. As you all know, we had our rodeo last month, and I would like to introduce you to, we'll start with the van operator, Robert Kalunga. Robert, Robert's here. Robert is 14-year VIA veteran. He took third place in the 2014 VIA rodeo and first place at the state level. That's pretty cool, isn't it? And he will be representing us at the state level and then the national rodeo in June. Our bus rodeo winner, Mr. Dominguez, who is a 20-year representative and has won the last five years, could not be here today, but let's just do a round of applause on his behalf. Now, on the maintenance side, and you know, we're kind of used to taking first in the nationals, so that's just a warning to our maintenance team. Interesting thing is that the first-place winner on the maintenance team also won all, I think, all but one of the eight categories of individual excellence. So took seven of eight categories first place, which is remarkable. Kevin Diaz. Kevin? Is Kevin here? Marco Lopez and Michael Zamora and Ismael Gonzalez will be the remainder of the team. And so let's congratulate them. If they're here, please stand up. I'd like to also recognize, and we do have a lot of these folks here, that the 2015 bus van and maintenance rodeo, goals of the rodeo are to provide equitable competition, encourage a high degree of professionalism in operators and mechanics, and build camaraderie among all those that compete. The annual event takes weeks of preparation and planning, and it's also geared to prepare our agencies' winners for state and international rodeos. So we have the team here today that helped put it together. If you'd all rise. Pauline Vasquez was the rodeo committee chairperson. Pauline, raise your hand. I'd like to recognize all of you. A lot of hard work. It was a beautiful day. And in fact, it was so beautiful that we had an outstanding celebrity rodeo, and I'm going to recognize a couple of celebrity winners right now. I'll have their shot. Okay, hold on a second.
The winner of the VIA celebrity rodeo, Lester Bryant.
You're so welcome.
And thank you, Paul.
And this is a very special award. It is for the best score by a VIA board chairman.
Now let's present. He was too tall, and he wouldn't be able to do that well. But let me tell you what, just driving those, and I think Mark will agree with me and Lester will too, just trying to drive that rodeo, it says, "I got a lot of respect for our operators," because that is a tough job. And they do it so well. They do a great job. All our operators are winners, and they all deserve a trophy.
I totally agree with that. I totally agree with that.
That's right, yeah. Yeah. No traffic, no passengers. We were just concentrating on avoiding the cones.
And again, I really want to thank the committee, because I know it's a lot of hard work, a lot of hours. I know it's a lot of fun, too, but nonetheless, couldn't do it without you. So thank you very much for the time you put into that. We all appreciate that. Just want to recognize two other people. Stephanie Suarez. Stephanie, please stand up. Stephanie was kind of our project champion for our first showcase, our city council district four showcase, about a week ago. And we want to thank her for putting together an excellent program that I think was enjoyed. I said if the people there enjoyed it half as much as I did, then we had a very successful day. Thank you for that, Stephanie. And Hannah Santiago. There she is, all right. She's with Bus and Rail Strategic Planning, and she successfully achieved the American Planning Association certification. This achievement is a tremendous accomplishment, requires that a planner have a distinguished work history, and the successful completion of a rigorous examination. She will now have the prestigious designation of American Institute of Certified Planners. We're very proud of you. We know it's hard work. We're so glad you're on our team, and we look forward to reaping the benefits of your education. So thank you so much, and congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, with that, let's move on with the agenda. Our first item of the citizens to be heard.
Mr. Chairman, we have three citizens to be heard tonight, and the first one is Damon Mason.
Chair Marzegna, President, I mean, Chair, yeah, President Arnt, is I, Damon Mason. You may, you may now find it, you may find it interesting that I, you know, I, you know, on the, on the 12th of November 2014, I had the pleasure of meeting with Contra Noi and Christina Castagno about an essay I gave you, about, I gave, I gave, I gave the chairman and the CEO about, you know, Texas Loop 13, and why, and why I feel is a good idea to construct, to construct a, a, a double control lane right down, right down, right down the middle, right down the middle of Texas Loop 13, both Military Drive and WW White, WW White Road. Of course, and of course, and of course, and of course, and there, because there were a lot of other details in there. Now, I, when I met with Contra and Christina, I felt, I was astonished to find out that, that, you know, that my essay commenced them to extend, to expand their research initiative further west, but not, but not, but not, but not further east. And I, and I do not, I do not think that that is good. Because I grew, I grew up in a small, rural town known, known as, known as Spring, Texas. And there is not, there is not, there is, there is no, there is no urban transit service there. There, and there's definitely no great, there's no, there's no Greyhound there, there's definitely no, there is no Anthrac train line there. So all it was, all it was, the people drive, all it, you either had to have a car or have a bike in order to get, in order to get, get around there. So, so, you know, I, I can applaud a, an article in the San Antonio Observer about the, about the AT&amp;T Center, "No Money For, No Money For, No Money For The East." I mean, of course, let's see, Andy, if you could. Give us, give us close to the, to the VIA chairman and the... Anyway, anyway, as you can see, as you can see, as you can see for yourself, you know, it talks about, you know, how the AT&amp;T Center was constructed with, with a bonds, the total value of $186 million. Did, okay, okay, for something that, for something that pricey, did, did that, did any of that money, did any of that money go back to, go back to the actual east side? Nope, sorry, nope, not one red cent. Only one, only forty, only forty-one, only forty-one million dollars. I mean, what, what an insult. I mean, upon coming, you know, coming, you know, encountering that article, I mean, I thought, I drew back my bull head in Spring, Texas, having, having no, having, having no mass transit, my parents actively denied me, asking for more transportation, it's just, no, it's, it's just not, it's just not right. I'm sorry.
Okay. I told the Express and News guy over there, they got a new, new sheriff in town, that I wanted him to put me down, to sing "It's So Easy When You Take The Bus," VIA VIA. So he said, "Well, I don't know." I want to give my condolences to the, the young man that got killed last week. It's not too much we can do about it. This past Saturday, around about 6:30, I got off the bus. Guy had a knife stabbing the other guy, they were rolling, the police came, and they took the knife from the guy, and then they were trying to handcuff him. He was so strong, they couldn't do it. So the police said, "One, two, three, four, five, move out." And shot him with the DAZA, or whatever you call that machine. He was just jumping up and down, that knocked him out. Then they handcuffed him. We never know when something's going to happen. The little baby was two years old, sitting on the VIA bus bench, and the lady said, "Man, go get that baby off that bench." So the guy went and got the baby and gave it to the lady in the wheelchair, and she gave it to the mother that was crying over there. We saw all that action going on. And then they told us to go to CPS. I asked our supervisor, "What time do the number five go?" "I don't know." "What time, what time is it?" He gave me some kind of other time. So the people sitting right there text VIA to tell me what time the bus was going to come. Now, the Primo bus, y'all need to have on their, these buses stop at railroad tracks. They could, somebody could run in the back of the bus. The ADA bus route needs to run every 20 minutes. You know, y'all need to have a Primo bus go down San Pedro. Veterans Day, y'all had too many buses on the Primo route. Half of those buses need to be taken off. And one driver said, "Well, they paying us for driving for empty buses?" I said, "But does that make sense?" And then, one more thing. Y'all gave y'all bus drivers the big pay raise, 3%, and then you took it back with the insurance. Shame, shame, shame on you. VIA advertising on the windows, that's a no-no. What if somebody's fighting on the bus and the police come and get, get on the bus and get hit upside the head? It can't happen. Some of the buses, the lights on the outside of the buses, y'all don't have no lights on the outside of the buses when you get off the back door. VIA need more policemen, we know that. And, well, so much, I'll continue with this here. Mr. Marzegna, at that last meeting, when y'all had your budget, I was the only citizen here. I asked for, for them to give me a copy of what we talked about. Nobody else gave me a copy yet. The only, y'all was paying somebody to sit over here and tape everything I said, whoever came up. Nobody came up. I was the only person. So what I'm trying to say in a short word, VIA, y'all need to get your act together. Have a good day.
Willie Mae Clay.
Come on up, Willie Mae.
Good evening. As I entered the room, I saw the, Tramell Brown, he was introduced about two meetings ago, that he is now in charge of safety and security. Thank you much. Tramell, would you come here, please? I'm not going to, I know, I want you to, first, come here, please. I want you to come and look at my scooter. Can everyone at the board see my scooter and the person on it?
Bring the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, bring the microphone.
Do we have the portable mic?
Yeah, here.
Tramell, the reason I want you to get involved in my presentation is that I, I want you to tell them whether I have sufficient amount of tie-downs on my scooter to secure, to make sure that the driver secures me either on the bus or the van. Would you look at my scooter, please?
Yeah, I can see.
How many tie-downs do I have?
Looks like you've got four tie-down straps on.
Okay, do I have enough for secure, to be secured on either the bus or the van?
As long as there's no obstructions to reach them.
Okay, all right. Now watch me. I have my purse, and I'm going to move, remove my purse. I got it. Show you the way I travel. I remove my purse when I, from on the van or the bus, I remove my purse, so the straps can be exposed, okay? And then, this is a green bag that I was given by VIA Trans at one of the open houses, okay? And it's good to have, because of the way that it's designed, if you're out at night, you can be seen. So if I'm, if the driver is reaching for the tie-down that's under my leg, he can easily get to that. Okay, you see, I can remove it. Well, let me tell you, make it quick, because I'm running out of time. On the, on the 29th of October, I went downtown by bus, early voting. No problems. Often times, when I go down, the drivers see me, I'm on the same route. Didn't have any trouble. On the way back, at 6:10, in front of the Justice Center, driver picks me up, begins to tie me back down in the back, and she stood up and she looked at me, and she said, "I can't tie you any further." I said, "Well, you're going to have to." I said, "You cannot move this bus unless I'm secure." She said, "Well, you got too much stuff." She said, "You must move this basket." I said, "Mm-mm. This basket is part of my scooter." And she said, "Well, you got too much stuff." I said, "Well, this bag was given to me by VIA Trans at an open house." She said, "Well, this is not VIA Trans." The bottom line is, I said, "Tell me what I need to do." I showed her the belt, the one in the front. The ones in the back, they're obvious. Ones in the front, I said, "They're under my leg." Said, "Tie it down." She did not want to reach over in the corner to get that tie-down, to get that securing it. I said, "You have to get it." She said, "Well, move your basket." I said, "I'm not." At any rate, she finally reached over and she got it, and she secured me. She secured me. She got on the phone and she called the dispatcher. I knew she was talking about me, because she said she has. I don't know whatever she told the dispatcher, but when I got off the bus, when I got to my stop, she said, "I called the dispatcher and I reported you." She said, "If I see you again at my bus stop, and you have this stuff on your scooter, on your device," oh, she didn't call it device, she, "if you have this on your card, I'm not picking you up." I said, "You're wrong." I said, "I haven't done anything to you." I said, "You didn't know how to tie me down, didn't want to tie me down." I said, "You don't want to work." I said, "You're lazy." That's what I told her. Because when you turn on the cameras, and when you turn on the, on the audio, you hear what I told her. I told her she was lazy. At any rate, I said, "What's your number?" She said, "There it is, ma'am," and I recorded it. I didn't have anything in my hand, I just reached in my purse. I, I recorded something on something that was protruding out of my purse. I took down the bus number and I took a badge number. Okay, on the, on the 10th, I took 25 downtown to Commerce and Presser. I looked at my watch, it was about 5:30. There's a Whataburger there at that intersection, and I thought, and I looked, pulled, and got my 21 schedule. And I said, "Oh, my goodness." I said, "The next bus is, is 5:45." Said, "I'm not going to rush, I'm going to get something to eat, and then I'm going." And then I looked again, the next bus was 6:10, and I thought, "Oh, my goodness, I'm going to encounter that driver." I just knew it. Well, sure enough, I did. And she is good to her word, because when she arrived at Presser and Market, she saw me, and there were other people at the stop who wanted to get on the bus, and she shook her hand at me. She shook her finger. She told me, "No, no, no. You don't get on this bus." So she got out of the seat, she went to the right of the bus, because there was someone mobility impaired that was secured. She went, went over and untied the individual. The person was using a manual wheelchair, so that person had to be pushed. When that person was pushed off the bus, I knew she wasn't going to let me get on, so Willie Mae forced her way on the bus, because I knew I didn't have anything in violation. I, I was entitled to a ride, I didn't, what you see is what you get, is what I had on the, on the 29th. And I rushed on that bus. She jumped in front of me, and she said, "Get off this bus." I said, "I will not." She said, "You're going to get off." She said, "I reported you to the dispatcher the other day when I saw you, and he knows about you." I said, "I don't care if he does." I said, "I'm going to take this ride." She said, "You're going to get off, or I'm going to call the transit police." I said, "You can call whoever you want." So she moved to the side, and she pulled, and she, she obtained the, the receiver. And I just parked in place, and I sat and waited. She didn't tie me down, and she wasn't going to. So I sat, and about 15 minutes later, the supervisor arrived. And I reported all of this, it's all over there, but the bottom line is this, when the supervisor arrived, and she saw me sitting there, she saw what I had on my device, she said, "This is not a problem." She said, "I had, you have all that you need to be secure. There's nothing obstructing the other people from getting on the bus." She said, "These people want to go home." She said, "Let me secure your device. Let me do it." I said, "Okay, go ahead." But let me tell you something. We have a problem out there. We have drivers who don't want persons with disabilities to ride. They don't tell you that, but they don't want you to ride. And secondly, we have drivers who've been trained, but they need refreshers, they need refreshers. And then you have drivers who think they are powerful, that bus doesn't belong to the driver. It belongs to the citizens, because we pay the taxes. As long as I can get on a van or a bus and I don't pose a threat, I should not be denied.
Willie Mae, thank you. I think we appreciate the extensive presentation you've given us.
And I've exceeded the time, and I appreciate it.
But we need to get on with our meeting.
I understand.
And I'm glad that you reported that, because obviously, that's something that we're not going to be accepting. We'll follow up, I'm sure.
I appreciate the additional time, but I want you to know, there's drivers out there, in fact, you're a man.
Thank you, Willie Mae.
You have your hands full. And happy holidays for you.
That completes our citizens to be heard.
There are no more citizens to be heard.
Okay, very good. And I'm sure that we'll follow up on that.
I have every confidence that we already have, but I'll let you know.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item number five on our agenda, the consent agenda. Y'all have had a chance to review that. Are there any items that anybody would like to pull to have discussed individually? Hearing none, do I, the chair will entertain a motion for approval? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Last chance to shake anything off. Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us then to item number six on our agenda, and that's the, I believe Brian is going to be making, there's Brian now, making the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. With me this evening is Mr. Terry Bellamy. He'll be speaking here in a couple of minutes about the transportation component of the comprehensive plan. But I also want to recognize in the audience, Mr. Peter Zanoni, Deputy City Manager with the City of San Antonio, and Mr. John Dugan, the Director of Planning with the City of San Antonio. So they're also here this evening, and I appreciate them being here. As many of you know, the City of San Antonio is undertaking a comprehensive transportation, or a comprehensive plan, and as part of that is a long-range, comprehensive, multimodal transportation plan, in which VIA will be playing a very intimate role associated with that. So this evening, I wanted to bring Terry before you to have kind of a kickoff as to how as to how this process is going to move forward. And just also reiterate to the board that VIA is very involved in this. And you'll see some presentations in the coming months about VIA's update to its long-range comprehensive transportation plan also. So with that, Terry?
All right, good evening and glad to be here. We're very excited about having the opportunity to kick off our comprehensive plan. The overall plan will provide technical guidance for information and data use in the development of the transportation element for the 2040 City of San Antonio Comprehensive Plan. The intent of the transportation element of the comp plan is to provide for a safe and efficient multimodal transportation system that offered choices between public transit, pedestrian, bicycle, and automobile use for all ages. The City of San Antonio strives to create a seamless connection between the different modes of transportation as well as ensure transportation services develop appropriately. The growing situation of congestion are not unique to San Antonio. Not unique to San Antonio. Congestion is the outgrowth of success and the desire to live in, live in or around our community. Linking the city transportation planning work with the Metropolitan Planning Organization, TechDOT, and VIA Long Range Plans will give, uh, will give us the opportunity to create a crucial long-range planning exercise that is needed. At the same time, this will be including our neighboring cities and counties as well to make sure that we have an improvement in our decision-making process that affect the region and not just only San Antonio. As our region grows and our relationship between the state and the local jurisdictions is critical, transportation planning needs to be balanced between competing needs and to look at how we can provide and reduce traffic speed and encourage pedestrian and bicycle use. Even more complicated are the issue related to roads that are important to our interest, interest state travel but also undesirable to local citizens. The need for reasonable transportation choices in San Antonio and Barra County region is growing faster than the community ability to build new roads. To improve existing roadway capacity, to provide transit service, and connect bicycles and pedestrian facilities. These deficiencies lead to questions concerning the level of congestion that San Antonio is willing to, to invest, to accept. As San Antonio planning and investing in facilities, it's become imperative that we look at the policies. We will examine the policies and discuss how to address bicycle and walking as a more viable alternative to driving alone. The discussion and review on how to make regional and local transit service a cost-effective and time-competitive choice that capture a larger proportion of trips in San Antonio. The comprehensive plan will also include discussion on housing, jobs, sustainability, health, and other related issues in our community. And this will be very important as we decide on the future of our transportation system. VIA as a partnership, VIA as a partnership, in year 2040, San Antonio would need to have safe, sustainable transportation system. You may ask, "What's VIA role in this plan?" Just as the vision for the automobile-based society resulted in elaborate freeways back in the 60s and 70s, the new vision would probably create a system geared toward uniting our neighborhoods and employment centers, toward a, a wide variety of transportation choices rather than distract from our quality of life. What we're gonna see by year 2040 is residents and visitors who want to have access to a wide range of improved transportation options by enhancing our competitiveness of non-automobile modes of transportation. Travel time, safety, service quality, and through the improvement of integration between travel modes, that's the partnership that VIA brings to this plan, to this planning document. VIA is a partner. VIA is a major partner as they will be updating their 2040 plan at the same time we're updating our 2040 multimodal transportation plan. The strategic multimodal plan depends on VIA to provide the technical support for the future of premium transit for the year 2040. Using the results from the 2035 plan and the update of the 2040 VIA Transit Plan, VIA serves over 1,200 square miles and includes representation to portions of almost every city in the Barra County region. The Board of Trustees provide representation on, on your board from San Antonio City Council, Barra County, the County Commission, to two suburban mayors. As with the VIA 2035 plan, we seek to understand the transit technologies, the timelines, the funding option for premium transit that will be needed by year 2040. We know that San Antonio is a destination for a new 1 million people by the year 2040. We know that San Antonio will, will create an additional half million jobs by the year 2040. This process, working with VIA in a multimodal planning process, will give us a comprehensive approach to how we're gonna handle mobility in the future. The transparency of planning process starts now. In the beginning with VIA, TechDOT, the MPO, and our regional partners to keep San Antonio as a leader of developing San Antonio as one of the nation's healthiest, greenest, mobile, and most livable cities. So we look very, we look very, uh, well, we are pleased and very fortunate to have VIA working with us and together because this plan will be the blueprint for tomorrow. Thank you.
Brian, do you want to add anything to that?
I would just add that, um, to date, um, we have already started at a staff level coordinating our plans with their plans. We've talked about public outreach, our first initial outreach program, going out together with, with our plan and their plan and working and how we can work together in a cohesive nature. So this is a community plan at the end of the day. This is the base of our 2035 plan with the city's plan, pushed out to 2040. And we're using that as the base to, to get to the right answer and to get a community plan out there. So I'm very fortunate to be working with them also and my staff. I think this, um, this collaboration is very good and will be a very good benefit to the community as we move forward.
And Brian, you're going to bring the, the schedule for the 2040 update of the long-range transit plan to the board next month.
Yeah, that's correct. Staff is prepared, uh, the opening to our 2040 long-range comprehensive plan update. Now we'll work through the committee process starting in December.
Now, are we going to, at this point, you're still working out the details of agreement agreeing back to us?
We are, that'll be an, an item in our legal session this evening.
Try to say that again?
We'll have that discussion in our legal session this evening.
Okay. Good, any comments, anybody? Let me just say that, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
2040 is a quarter of a century away. It just seems very far away. That was it. 25 years ago, there was a Berlin Wall. We were worried about the Russians. It, it just, this is, this is a little longer of a range than...
That's true.
I think we could meet some of these goals probably earlier than 2040.
If I may answer that question, you're, you're exactly right, Mayor. Part of this is an implementation plan that takes this and puts it into baby steps as we move forward, probably five-year increments, what can be achieved in the next five years and the next five years after that. So that exact conversation has been had.
I think we, what we're looking at is a, a rotating or an ongoing 25-year window with five-year increments with, and we have a five-year implementation strategy.
That's correct, Chairman.
Anybody else? Let me, let me just say that, um, obviously, transportation is clearly interrelated with, you know, any type of comprehensive planning approach. Whether you're talking about housing or neighborhoods or business activity, sprawl, uh, water availability, just a whole array, environmental quality, whether it be air quality, whether it be water quality. Uh, all those are issues that are tied together. And we want to be sure we continue to work together in the future. I want to also acknowledge the fact that with us tonight as well are John Dugan, our, the Plan Director from the City of San Antonio, and Peter Zanoni, an old friend, who's Deputy City Manager. Welcome, thank you all for being here. And we look forward to work with you all as we continue to work on these planning efforts in the future. And based upon the experience we've had in the past, we know we'll be able to be successful in pursuing our goals and maybe hitting that start button again on that pause. Okay, with that, uh, we'll bring to our next item, which is item number seven. And Brian, you're gonna introduce that one as well.
I am, I'm gonna step down. I'm Katandra Noy, my manager of planning, and Jason, who's the project manager. I will give a presentation on land use, which is another part of the comprehensive plan as we move forward.
While Jason gets us set up here, I'll go ahead and introduce us. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katandra Noy. I am the Planning Manager of Bus and Rail Strategic Planning and Project Development Division. I have to my right, um, our senior planner on my staff, Jason Rodriguez. A focus area, major focus area, is the land use component of how we do business here. And he will also, just for FYI, be leading, be one of the leaders of our, um, update for our long-range plan. Jason?
Thank you, Katandra. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna be talking a little bit today about our transportive land use effort. We've just, um, over the last nine months or so, worked on a series of deliverables which essentially looked at, or are the result of looking at the City of San Antonio and other municipalities around our service area in terms of their, uh, land use policy, development codes, things like that. And really seeing where we already are transit supportive and where we could have some improvement as compared to some of the best practices nationwide. Transit supportive land use is an important component, we think, to building better communities. Certainly makes, uh, public transportation, uh, brings that to the forefront of that discussion. But it also is something that is important to seeking federal funding for capital projects. In other words, these policies should be in place and under implementation around these large capital investments. So this was something that, that we went through. We do have several deliverables. They are available here if you would like them. I didn't hand them out so we could sort of go through the presentation, but I'd be, we'd be happy to provide that if, if you'd like. Going into the presentation, I'd like to start with just a little bit of context. Of course, we did a 2035 long-range plan between 2009 and 2011. It was essentially a vision for, um, high-capacity transit across the VIA service area. Did have extensive public input. We prioritized capital projects and out of that came SmartMove. So VIA SmartMove obviously is where we're investing $350 million, um, moving forward. And, uh, many of those projects are very much under construction, as many of us are aware who are over at the depot. So as we just heard about the, the transportation plan, City of San Antonio, and last month about the comprehensive plan, the City of San Antonio, uh, is proceeding with their comprehensive plan and transportation component of that plan, which will be working very closely with. The comp plan essentially is policy guidance that the city will move forward with in areas such as transportation, housing, jobs, growth, and that sort of thing. Whereas the transportation plan will update the major thoroughfare plan and, um, provide a, a system to prioritize capital projects as they move forward. And of course, we'll be coordinating, as we've, we've heard already tonight, very closely with them through our 2040 update. So the 2040 update essentially begins with the 2035 plan as, as our starting point. And for that plan, we essentially started from zero. I mean, not entirely, but it's fair to say that now we are starting from that plan. Um, we're gonna look at analyzing, uh, some options for analyzing an expanded study area. I'll talk about this a little bit more next month. And we'll be looking at, obviously, bus and rail solutions across, for VIA service and ATD infrastructure. Look at needs for pedestrians because pedestrians make up the vast majority of our riders. Uh, and then we'll include some recommendations for policy reforms that are beneficial to, um, VIA providing efficient services to meet the transportation needs across our region. So there's a common thread between this, brings us back to the transportive land use. The, the common thread really is this land use piece. Obviously, we are in the transportation business. We provide a transportation service to the citizens of the San Antonio area. And municipalities such as the City of San Antonio and other municipalities within our service area all have the authority to, um, basically regulate and, and put forth policies for development and, and land use. And so what this sort of does is brings those two together. Obviously, it, transportive land use means that it's supportive of, uh, both, both economically and socially effective use of transit. That's basically what we're trying to do. And by doing that, you usually include a mix of land uses so you don't have, uh, commercial over here in one little area or part of town, office over here, single-family residential over here. While that's all fine and good and that works very well in many parts of our city, what transit supportive land use would do is look at certain locations where we can bring many of those uses together. So that way, it's something that can be effectively used by pedestrians. Uh, those pedestrians then could use public transportation and go to other nodes such as that. So it really focuses, again, on the pedestrian and the walkability within these areas. And I'll talk a little bit about the areas in just a second. So the image that I, that I put up here is just an example and it's really nowhere specific, but it's a good example to show what this all looks like if, if we're successful in implementing transportive land use. And what you see here, uh, obviously is a streetscape. You see complete streets and by that I mean using several different modes of transportation within that right-of-way, including bikes, parking, public transportation, cars, and pedestrians. You see a, um, really generous pedestrian environment, an active storefront where there are several goods and services that people can engage as they walk along the street. You see, um, a level of density, in this case, it's higher density. It doesn't have to be this high density. And of course, a mix of uses, um, which usually is handled by there being a certain use at the storefront and then residential above that or office. So just to give a, a quick sort of diagrammatic overview of how we relate to, um, the process that city will be going through. You basically have a region. We're preparing for 1 million new people and 500,000 new jobs by 2040. Um, that's a common denominator there. What the city's process has already begun to do and will continue to do is to define regional activity centers across the region where you would have concentrated job growth and higher-density population relative to other parts of the region. Then that's where we come in and we identify how we can connect these regional centers with high-capacity transit. So this offers a good alternative for moving people between these regional centers where you have higher activity. Uh, and really the portal between land use and our high-capacity transit service are the stations. So the stations really become important. It's not necessarily, I mean, obviously, the line on the map has a lot of implications for infrastructure and all that stuff. It's very important to show us what direction we're going in. We all relate to the line, but the stations are actually where the people are interacting with the service and what's just outside of that station and surrounding it. So just to talk very quickly about station areas, this is just a diagram again. And, uh, what, what you see in these station areas is not just the high-capacity transit service that serves all of the stations, but other underlying services that will interact with those particular station areas. So those station areas then become defined as a half-mile, or a quarter-mile to a half-mile around. That's a very generic sort of walking distance oriented, uh, number, a quarter-mile to half-mile. But it really is how close people are by walking to things around the station. So when we do planning in station areas, which a lot of the deliverables that we, we recently put together, which are, are, um, a transit supportive land use toolkit that could be used by, uh, staff and consultants in moving forward with these planning efforts. and consultants in moving forward with these planning efforts, another toolkit on strategic housing, which is putting and maintaining affordable housing and market-rate housing in a mix around station areas, and also a guide to transport of land use. This is all, these are all the deliverables. And what was an important part, or a focus of that, is actually planning in these station areas. So as we develop these high-capacity transit corridors, we identify station locations. The area around that is really, really becomes important. So not every station is going to stop in an exact same environment. Some places might be established neighborhoods. Other places might be commercial corridors, or some might be urban centers. And so what we'll be able to do is determine what typology that station is. And actually, that will help us to guide, or work with our municipalities and developers to guide how development happens in that particular area to really maximize the useful, the utility of the station or the transit service. And what you see here is a list of the typologies that we've developed. This is still continuing on. But what, the examples that you see, well, first of all, the station typologies are what you see. There's central station, urban center, Main Street, and so forth. The examples there are just an example, so it's not, those aren't the only stations or passenger facilities that would be classified as a particular station type, but these are examples to communicate that. And for this, just as I mentioned before, a central station, for example, is something that would be in the downtown area. Or a Main Street might be something where it's really focused in a commercial corridor or neighborhood. It's something that we're really going to focus on pedestrian access because it's an established neighborhood. We're not going to really do a lot of new development. Park-and-rides would be something that would really make sure that people drive safely and clearly to a park-and-ride. So there's different purposes or environments that these would be addressing. So just to use one example, it's something that's real, it's something that we're working on. When we're talking about stationary plans, this particular example is Brooks City Base. And so Brooks is, has already and is continuing to go through a land use planning process. And we are, as part of Smartmove, developing a transit center there at Brooks. So it's in the middle there where Sydney-Brooks and South New Braunfels intersect, in the middle of Brooks. And what you see there, they've identified that sort of purple-hatched area around that intersection is higher-density mixed-use. So this is typically what you would prescribe for something near a station like Brooks Transit Center or another high-capacity station in another part of town. And you'd do this sort of plan. Luckily, Brooks has done this plan. It actually works very well with where we would locate this particular station investment, so it's kind of backwards. But we're continuing, this gives us an opportunity to really continue to work with Brooks and show an example of doing stationary planning in other parts of San Antonio. And again, this is that quarter-to-half-mile circle just relative to where our location is to the Brooks land use plan. So what we want to do is just talk a little bit, very quickly, about the value of transit supportive land use. The example you see here is what we would call conventional multifamily housing. And so we did a little bit of an exercise to demonstrate that transport of land use is something that actually is worthwhile and can produce returns for both the municipality and the developer. In this case, you have a tip, this is a typical multifamily development. It's moderate density. You have a high parking ratio, which essentially means you have usually one and a half parking spaces per unit, in that it's very auto-centric. And there might be some transit service there. There might not be. It depends on where it is. So this is very easy to fund, relatively speaking, and it's most common. Then you have transit-adjacent development. In this particular case, this is an example that's all multifamily. It's all just residential. This is similar to what you see currently going up in and around downtown. However, there have been more, some of those projects that are a little higher density, and they do have an active storefront. So you are starting to see it go towards more of a transit-supportive development. This is moderate to high-density. There's still a high parking ratio. So in this case, since it's higher, higher-density, you're usually going to have structured parking, which can be much more expensive than the surface parking you see in the conventional development. It's still auto-centric in that sense, because you're still putting that investment in parking cars. And typically here, these are in areas where there is high transit service, as we've seen. And then this is an example of transit-supportive development. In this case, still, we're looking at a residential example, but it is mixed-use development. Most certainly has an engaged storefront along the street where there are generous sidewalks and that sort of thing. It is higher-density. You have a lower parking ratio. So in this case, you might have less than one space built per unit, which, at the same time, you have that investment being made in less parking, we would be making the same investment, or at least a concurrent investment, in high-capacity transit. So people who would live here would not need a car and could use an alternative such as public transportation. And this is more pedestrian-centric. And just to give an example of what, how this looked in our case study, you see conventional is all the way on the left, transit-adjacent in the middle, transit-supportive on the right, just like you saw in the previous slide. And in this particular example, you have fewer units in conventional, and you can build more units with higher density, obviously, because it's higher-density, and transit-supportive. And then what you see is that you, on the top right, you have more parking spaces because you increase units. You keep that high ratio of parking to units. That structured parking is going to be very expensive, and that is a huge cost to the developer. Whereas transit-supportive with that lower ratio, you have a lower parking cost relative to the building. So the project value is in the bottom-left, and in this particular example, what you see is essentially what the ad valorem value would be for this project or the construction value. And the transit-supportive is going to be much higher, because you could have less leasable space for commercial uses, and you have more units. So it's going to be, it's going to generate more revenue. And then on the bottom-right, what you essentially see is what the rents would need to be on average for, this is per square foot, for that particular development to be feasible. And in this comparison, the point is, we're showing that transit-supportive land uses or transit-supportive projects can actually not cost very much more than what a conventional multifamily residential project would cost to be feasible, whereas a transit-adjacent that is actually using that same parking ratio and building structured parking and all that would be much more expensive and require much more subsidy. So that's sort of what this is representing. So moving forward, last couple of slides here, what came out of some of these deliverables regarding transit-supportive land use guidance is that the city of San Antonio is going through a Unified Development Code update from January to May, is when they'll be taking applications for recommended changes to that code. And then through the rest of the year until January of 2016 is when some of those changes would be adopted, or many of those changes would be adopted. And we're going to go forward with some of those recommendations in this particular process, which include how transit facilities get permitted, some of the pedestrian connectivity aspects, how traffic impact assessments are actually done and when they're triggered, how they relate to transit service and pedestrian levels of service as well, and even start to look at some of the parking issues. So as we continue to coordinate through the comp plan process, we'll start to look at stationary typologies, which is that list I showed a little bit before, and also to see how we might look at coordinating design and density and use of a particular project more directly as it relates to where our stations are located. Of course, we're going to continue to work with the city of San Antonio. We're going to coordinate the development of our long-range plan with the Strategic Multimodal Transportation Plan very closely, and then also work with suburban municipalities and other stakeholders to implement transit-supportive policies in other parts of our service area and region. And so we look at this as, it's a nominal upfront investment that we've done in doing a lot of this homework, this policy work, and this coordination in order to get a really big return later. The, we want to coordinate priorities for targeted investments. So as several agencies have their own agendas and their own capital programs, we make sure they're coordinated so we're investing in the same areas. And then we want to set clear some understandable expectations for the private sector, so they'll feel comfortable in actually being bold and making these types of investments. We also want to see higher-value investments translate into higher public revenue, obviously. So that way, that can result in other services to other parts of the area. And then we want to increase our competitiveness for federal funding with this coordinated approach. This is something, as we have gone through the project development process, have definitely seen as very important, that the FTA holds as very important, is that we're all working together and that these policies are in place that really reflect the usefulness of the public transportation service that's there. So we are, I can't reiterate enough, we are in competition with all of the United States and cities across the nation that all have very good projects and ideas and that sort of thing. And what we want to do is make sure that we're competitive to meet halfway and get these projects delivered, bring some of that money back to San Antonio. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, Mark?
Jason, I know you two were talking about an expanded study area.
Yes.
We are looking north? We're looking south?
So this is still something that we're discussing. And what you see in this particular slide, in this example, is the MPO's boundary. That doesn't necessarily mean this is what we're going with. We're still going to discuss what that expanded study area is. What's the scope of going beyond our particular service area when we look at that? We think it's really important that we're making sure whatever decisions we're making are related to the surrounding region.
Sure.
So we're, we're still in the process of defining what that study area is, but this is an example of what that is.
The suggestion is that, of course, you know, cities usually grow in pairs, like, for example, Dallas-Hort Worth, Fort Lauderdale, Miami, Baltimore, Washington, D.C. Austin is just up the road, and the bedroom communities between, they're all experiencing growth now. I think that's something that we need to put in our long-range plan, as well as the city. I know that Mr. Bellamy, being from Washington, D.C., is coming in, bringing his own taste of transportation here to us. And he still drives his car, and we're trying to get him out of his car. But San Antonio, Austin, and everywhere between is something where the long-range plan should be looked at heavily. And I do agree with Mayor Maron's. 2040 is a long way away on paper, but if you look at the growth of the communities between here and there, we got 15 years tops before that's going to be a reality for us.
Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation. Just for starters, thanks for the 38% DBE participation rate on the contract. Great number, and I'm glad you laid it out. Just a few quick comments. If you can go to slide 12, please. That, I believe it's either 12 or 13. I'm just looking on my monitor. That one right there. So great example of the value and the comparison of the multifamily. And this is a city issue down the road, but I'm kind of curious, as we go through the planning process, when we look at these transit-supportive land use issues, and what impact or change is there might be on a zoning matrix on a multifamily application down the road. Because when you see the multifamily developer, and I believe the next slide shows the parking costs, incremental parking costs, you know, whether it's $15,000 of space, I think we see numbers around here, 15 to $20,000 of space. And when you get to the multifamily side, covered parking, $22,000, $23,000 of space. And so that's a great example. So I'm hopeful that as you go through the UDC revision process and you're going through the planning commissions and the zoning commissions, there's some discussion about, it's always hard getting multifamily approved in certain areas of town, in whether it's the concept, whether it's the funding mechanism, whether it's the density. But maybe an opportunity to enhance the developer to look at the transit-supportive type value in a refined or revised zoning matrix. So I think it's a great slide. I appreciate the way you guys laid it out. And then if you can just go back to, towards the end of your presentation, the, the next steps that talks about the plans.
Is it this one?
14, please. Moving forward, yeah, perfect. And then really, just a few thought processes and a few questions. I, so when you're talking about the UDC revisions, as an organization, we'll be making an application to the city to change the zoning use matrix, correct? I mean, because today, it's pretty limited. And so VIA would have to go through a healthy zoning process, which is kind of interesting. And we should, we should have a public process. But I remember talking about this issue several years ago, where there was a UDC revision, and we got some modifications then, allowing certain things, not necessarily by right, but, so I'm just asking from the staff perspective, that we kind of dig deep into that and is, to the extent that we can, be as fair as we can, and of course, with our partner. But looking at those opportunities, I think a governmental entity that has city appointees on it and county appointees, there ought to be some ongoing MOU that allows us to, whether it's a parking, a park-and-ride, whether it is a bus stop, whether, when we need a land use change, it should not be as difficult as it can be today. And so I get the sense that the discussions that we're having right now with the city, there's a hope to change that. And so I'm certainly excited about that, because I know historically, that's been difficult to do. So being permitted by right would be fantastic. And I'm sure that could mean lots of different things. But as you're going through that process, another thing that I'd ask that you look at and pay attention to, especially as we're going through these UDC updates, and as you guys know, that's 500 pages. It's getting amended. It's probably 600 pages now. I don't know. But opportunity to look at lots of areas that impact how VIA does their business within that development code, especially all the plans and things that we have going on. So transit-oriented developments, all the tax increment finance zones, and all the tourist funding rules in the UDC today. They're very specific as to residential developments, and they're very specific as to commercial developments. But there ought to be a separate set of rules for transit-oriented developments. Because, again, to incentivize that multifamily developer to do a transit-oriented development versus a conventional development with the conventional parking lot and the conventional densities, the only way we're going to get them to think about it differently is having a different set of rules. And I'd ask that, as we go through it, I mean, the city does it today for housing, and in the target area, in the original square footprint of the city, I mean, hopefully, we can get the same piece as we go through on the transit piece. So I'd ask that you guys add that, and you're probably already doing it, but I'd just like to advocate for that as well. And again, just, at the end, just thanks, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the city's cooperation. Great point from Mark. You know, unfortunately, the city of Austin has their own code and their own rules. But the UDC does apply in ETJ, correct? And so I know there's an annexation plan out there. Great time for us to look at those areas as, of course, those areas that we have a service area in. But a great time to look in the ETJ for those opportunities that some of these things might apply. So, because the UDC will apply in ETJ, and that will help us as well. So I just wanted to add those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts? I would just, if you could go back to slide number 13, which showed the different costs and the values and the comparison. I think it'd be important to give a feel for what would be the investment that would be required by the private sector to achieve those values. And then beyond that, what do those improved values mean for some of the public entities? Later in your presentation, you talk about how it'd be additional resources for the public sector. But for example, that value, that ad valorem value there results in some significant extra property tax revenues for school districts, as an example. And so that helps to alleviate or deal with other issues. When you start talking about comprehensive planning, it helps alleviate issues like education and... comprehensive planning, it helps alleviate issues like education and other challenges that we have to face, whether it be public safety issues, street maintenance or whatever, it provides additional resources for local government and for school districts, as an example, and something I think you ought to try to communicate as well. That was an excellent presentation, I think, a good summary and look forward to continuing to work on that and find out what's going on. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll then move to our next item on our agenda, which is item number eight, and I believe Charlie Gonzalez and Stephanie Suarez are going to be making this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is where Stephanie makes me look good with all her hard work. Many of you have seen this presentation and I know many of you have been very active in getting to where we are today, so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie.
Good evening. I'm glad to be before you this evening. As Mr. Gonzalez mentioned, you have seen some of this information before. And as you recall, we've been working over this item for the past couple of months and at the IGR and Public Affairs Board Committee meeting last week, we presented a list of nominees. And so in the interest of time, I do know we still have a lot more items to go in a legal briefing section, I will review some of the material you've seen before very, fairly quickly, but not too quick. As you recall, the Advisory Council, the purpose we are bringing all of these wonderful stakeholders together is to create an environment for collaboration and partnering with others, to serve as a sounding board and to offer recommendations and to also, to a certain extent, serve as transit ambassadors to strengthen lines of communication with constituencies and provide feedback. I think this slide is very important because it actually speaks to the two previous items that you heard this evening, where we want to assist, have this council assist in alignment efforts with the COSA Comprehensive Plan Initiative. We would also like for this council to serve as a community resource as we begin to update the Long Range Transportation Comprehensive Plan and identify opportunities to partner and leverage resources. And I do want to reiterate, that was mentioned last week, that we will be working very closely with Brian's group so we find these opportunities for synergy and brainstorming and education sharing and learning. Our participants are comprised of organizations and community representatives with an emphasis on diversity and geographic representation. We will have a chair and a vice chair and we would like for these individuals from organizations to be of decision-making capabilities. These are the participant categories and I just wanted to see if you wanted me to run through all the names again or just highlight perhaps the three additions that were identified from last week to this week. Would that be okay? Okay. Okay. So on this slide that you've seen before, it is proposed, as you had seen it at last week's meeting, and I think you've had this information as part of your pockets. The new individual on this slide is the City of Balconies Honorable Mayor Susan DeLeon. On this slide here, in response to the interest of making sure that we had neighborhood representation, we approached the neighborhood, well, thought of the Neighborhood Resource Center with the chair being Susan Shope. Port San Antonio Ronald C. Maurer, who is the President/CEO, is the other addition. This slide stays as is, as you've seen it before. Same here. This slide of individual nominees is the same. The only thing that has changed here is Dwayne Robinson has recently joined the Bear County staff with a wonderful opportunity, leading a new team focusing on neighborhood and community initiatives. And so he will need to withdraw, however, as you recall, on this next slide, the Bear County is one of our partner agencies and so we will be continuing to work together. Also, what we discussed was our board liaison is Board Member Lester Bryant, and so we are very excited to work with him as we work towards how we are going to implement the collaboration with this group. As just a refresher, this is the timeline that we have gone through to reach benchmarks and getting your approval for the membership of this council, September, October, November. This month, we went through a nomination and proposed membership and tonight, we are here to seek your approval for a membership appointment. And on this slide, we are going to utilize December as completing our recruitment and prepping and planning for our January activities, so that is the one thing that has changed. And we're going to push our gathering to January. There's about six weeks left in the year, half of them are dedicated to holidays and we just really, perhaps catching everybody after the new year will be really a better way to go, just because we do know there's just already so many things on the calendar. And so with this, staff would like to make a recommendation to seek your approval for the list of nominees to the VIA Transit Advisory Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Stephanie. Are there any questions? I think you borrowed up to date and filled in some of the gaps where we had some unknowns at some point. And so at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments or questions? Great. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That brings us then to our next item, which is going to be actually held, item number nine will be conducted after we finish our legal briefing. And our legal briefing is, would then be the next on our schedule. The time is now 6:27 o'clock PM and VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this executive session are as follow. Item number nine, entitled Director of Audit Performance Evaluation, which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and Section 551.074. Item number 10, entitled Legal Briefing, 10A, VIA City San Antonio Agreement Regarding Streetcar Portion of VIA's Smart Move Program. 10B, VIA ATD Authority to Develop, Operate and Maintain a Transit Authority System, Chapter 451, Texas Transportation Code, Local Orders and/or Other Radaratory Provisions. Item 10.C, Parking Initiatives, Tobin Garage Parking Agreement. And item 10.D, City of San Antonio Request Funding Participation Agreement, which are executive session items pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. All persons who are authorized to attend the executive session will please proceed to the small conference room. The time is now 7:42 and we are officially coming out of our closed executive session. Regarding Agenda Items 9, 10A, 10B, 10C and 10D, no deliberations of public policy or vote-taking occurred during the executive session. I think we're going to start off with following up action on item 10D and Brian's will be making that summary presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Staff is asking this evening to allow the CEO to enter into negotiations with the City of San Antonio for a funding agreement for up to $250,000 contribution to their comprehensive transportation plan that you've seen presented this evening. Staff does believe there is benefit to VIA being a part of that plan and also being part of the funding partners in that plan. So this evening, we are asking for the resolution and action associated with allowing the CEO to enter into those negotiations.
Motion for approval as directed and requested by staff, as requested by staff.
Here we have a motion and a second. Any questions for Brian, or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. And then the last item on our agenda is item number nine, with the Director of Audit Performance Evaluation. And this is the last item on the VIA agenda, we still have to do the ATD agenda in a moment, so don't know anybody to run off yet. And with this, I'll turn it over to the Chair of Audit Committee, Mayor Martin.
Yes, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for staying after this. On the 12th of November, the Audit Committee met and had, overwent the annual review of Mr. Wallace, the Director of the Audit Department. We used the same vehicle, the same evaluation sheet as was done the year before. We, we got input from not only staff, but also outside agencies that have dealt with the Audit Department. It was overall, it was a consensus that Mr. Wallace is doing an outstanding job. In fact, the last time he was evaluated, of that, on that evaluation, he met the standard and then exceeded the standard on three different items out of the 10. This year, he exceeded the, he exceeded the standard on seven out of the 10 and met on, or exceeded on all of them. The year before, he met or exceeded on five. So there was a significant increase in, the evaluation was performance. I would, I would move that we extend Mr. Wallace's contract by a year and I would propose an increase of salary of 5%.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of the Audit Committee. Are there any comments or questions? I would just like to add that I have to say, and I've been very impressed with Mr. Wallace's work. He's one of the most thorough and professional auditors, internal auditors that I've ever been associated with and I appreciate the value and the contributions of his work and I want to thank him, look forward to continuing to work with him in the future. I know the Audit Committee feels the same. And with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Great. Now, that brings us to our ATD agenda. I guess I can just adjourn the other meeting, right? Need to adjourn the VIA Board Meeting Agenda. Now we're going to the Advanced Transportation District Regular Board Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and our consent agenda is the first time, and those are primarily reports. Do we have any questions or anything would be pulled on any consent agenda items? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Is there a need for a legal briefing? No, we have some informational, no, the legal briefing is not necessary, right? Okay. If that's the case, then that closes our meeting and we're adjourned.